This conference will now be recorded.
It's the general commercial district and it's an amended site plan for parking. I think we have in front of us the application. I have a motion to bring it to the floor.
Take a motion to bring the application to the floor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
It says February 13th. It says February 13th up by the top right. No, he said he didn't.
I left mine in the other case.
Do we mute them?
You don't have to mute.
Do we mute them? Oh, he just muted himself. He just muted himself.
Man, I forgot my stuff. The application. I switch cases. Okay. I won't scribble all over.
I see him. Mr. Hutchins, do you do you plan to come in or are you going to stay online?
We are about two minutes away. We actually went to the police station because that's what online on the calendar says for the town. So we are about two minutes away.
Okay, we'll see you soon then. We're just going over your application right now.
Perfect, we will be in in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have yours.
I don't have, I don't have, but I just want, this is, okay.
Well, I believe this is the 2004.
Thank you.
Okay.
I see that. I'm here, that's not a good place for this.
Yeah, that's not showing the whole plan, the whole plan.
Okay. Okay, all right, that's not, yeah, okay, all right, yeah. This is the old 2004, okay?
Probably stuck there, yeah.
Are they downstairs? Oh, okay. All right, everybody's here now then. I saw Eric come in, but I, all right. All right. I'll make a motion to accept the application. Complete, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Hutchinson, you want to talk to us?
Over here? All right. Will you be asking me questions, is that how?
Do you want to tell us what you're planning to do? How are you planning to?
Okay, so Stephanie has been the one, she's been handling it all. Last week I was, she was at the meeting last week. I was out sick in the hospital for like nine hours with the flu. So she's been handling a lot of that, so. Been on medication for a while, so yeah, so I do appreciate you allowing her to be here last week and myself not to be here to get anybody else sick. But she's been the one working on it all, so I'll let her give you the presentation because she's a little more thorough with that.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're trying to do is we're trying to get more parking on the already existing parking lot that is there by using not only the parking lot that is there, but then the gravel that is extending as well. It's for automotive parking only, and this includes eight automotive spots for the employees that work there. So a total of 50 parking spots for the customers and the employees together, as well as the snow storage out back. So you can see kind of where the dumpster is. What they're also proposing is to add in a dumpster as they don't have one. The snow storage would be all back there. And then there is like an automotive access road around the whole building. So that would mean that a fire truck could get through and access all parts of the building if need be. And then you can kind of see, this is just the site plan for what we're proposing, which is the parking lot.
All right, planning board, have any comments or questions?
I have.
Eric.
Just looking at this plan. The regulations for the town. Well, I guess my first question is this two way access road around the building? Or is this a one way access?
Just a one way. I mean, you could go, I guess, either which way, but it's really only one.
Well, because the town zoning regulations, is that the right word I want to use? To get one way, you have to be a minimum of 18 feet wide.
Okay.
For two way traffic, you have to be 24 feet wide, which according to your calculations in the front of the building, not along Route 11, it says three parking spaces for employees, and you're showing a width there of 15 feet. And then as you come around to the going blockwise, you're showing 15 feet again. I question too, that that wouldn't meet the town regulation, but also I don't believe that would fit a fire truck. I don't, I'm.
I'm pretty sure it wouldn't fit a fire truck.
Yeah, I think the fire department, I think that's why we're 18 foot. And so that would be possibility of eliminating some of those parking spaces that you've indicated.
Okay, so that would essentially take away those three employee parking spaces up in the front. And then it would take away, I believe, to get, if you're 18, it would only be the three on that corner as well. So it's the total of the six right there.
Yeah, and I don't know because I'm just measuring, but I'm just going based on.
That one we measured it, yep.
Yeah.
So do you guys plan to like?
Wait, let me, are you finished?
Um, for now.
All right, anymore?
Do you plan to re coat and paint lines if this new parking plan were to be implemented? Or I guess, you know, how do you, how do you intend to have customers and owners know where the parking is, which way the travel lane goes, all that stuff?
If that's what the town would like to see, then that's absolutely what we would be doing. Yes.
Okay.
And we would put signs on the building. So like if it was any employee spots, we'll just put, you know, the employee parking. And then you can do one way signs and things like that, too.
And not all of this, some of this is gravel and some is blacktop, is that correct?
So a majority of it is blacktop. If you're looking at some of the spaces, it's kind of like a half and half. So half the car is on the blacktop while half the car would be on part of the gravel. And that would be give or take, I think it's like 10 spaces.
Any other questions, Mr. Damon?
Yeah. Where are the customers going to park?
Where? On this part, right? So around here. And then the 14ers, what is it, 12 parking spaces that are also in the middle?
Well, in the middle, it's not 12, it's 14.
Well, the first two don't count because that's too close to the road, is what someone.
Yeah, but you've got it delineated as a parking space.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, the line went through, yep.
So it's not a parking space?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Just 12, sorry.
So you haven't, you haven't shown us anywhere where the, where the customers are going to park?
It's labeled 12 spaces for customers, 23 spaces for customers.
I apologize. Have you, have you taken under advisement any of the recommendations by the Tilton Planning Board? Their meeting on February 23rd of 2024?
The conservation board?
Conservation.
They gave me like suggestions, but they weren't necessarily in writing. I never got a piece of paper that said I should do X, Y, and Z, or at least it wasn't sent to us.
I have, I have those in writing.
Okay, perfect.
Tom, you weren't here at the last meeting, but in terms of the oil water separator, they have no drains there now. And DES has completely changed their requirements. And when you weren't here last week, we passed out a letter from DES saying that they had changed that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Kevin? You want to acknowledge there's no drains in those buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's no longer a concern.
Okay.
The, if you go back to the original plan, which was 2004, I believe, there was supposed to be a detention pond, and the reason that was built and a drainage swale was because they were going to pave the entire lot.
Oh.
They did not do that. Okay? And as a result of that, they really don't need the retention pond.
Okay, good, good.
You're not going, from this drawing, I assume you would not be parking any vehicles outside, okay? And that's got to stay, all right? The wetlands, I believe, are in the very, very back corner near the Camara Heaven property. So it's important that the snow storage not be way, way in the back, and you don't have it shown there on this plan. Okay, so that basically takes care. And do you plan to do any planning along Route 3 planting? I mean, one of the things the conservation commission recommended was a berm. I think the same, if you, if you did some planting along there, it might resolve not having a berm.
Okay.
That would prevent erosion and, and the water pouring onto the highway.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Scanlon?
So this is an amendment here for the parking, but this plan, you're only, you're not amending on pointing to this. The other things on here, you're only amending the parking. This is the amendment for the parking and not that. That's a big issue there because these things are all still listed on there.
Okay.
When the, it's in a groundwater protection area as well as it's right on the flood plain. Pima regulated that. In 2020 DES, I think I gave you a copy of that letter. They said that they should be, any other activities that go on that should be very cautious because of groundwater protection. And one of the big things with that, the reason it should be paved, in my opinion, I'm just going to state that, it should be paved with the oil water separator is because to collect that oil and that from there. Now, it's to protect you a lot. We've had other sites in town such as Ernie's. There's a few of them where it's cost millions of dollars of the owner, plant, a property owner on the hook to clear that out. And that wasn't even in areas that were designated like that. There is a monitoring well on there. The other thing is, you know, there, there's quite a bit of parking.
There is a monitoring well.
Sure, right there. The DES, if you look at the letter from DES on 2020. That's it, right? Yeah, here we go. You're reading.
I thought I had it, but.
Down at the end, and it kind of gives a synopsis of concerns. Yeah, they tested it. And then they made comments on the administrative rules. At the end. That's a big thing to protect, well, not only the groundwater there that's in that area, but to protect you from, because all it takes is somebody to spill a bunch of antifreeze and all that, especially on a gravel parking lot. It's going to go right in there, and DES is already watching this spot. And I think they, they made comments about other activities that could make it worse.
Now, DES came out recently. I, I think, and you, they did come out recently. Do you have a copy of that report? And they found, they said that that was not one of their requirements when they came out.
That's best management practices for a garage. And that was a comment on a garage where he was, a single garage with five parking spaces only. And I know even recently it was in violation still.
Well, this, this letter is dated 2023 August 16th.
Yeah, and it refers, instead of using drains in the garage, that they could use absorbent, like pigs, you know, instead of how, they used to put drains in the floors of garages.
There are no drains in there, I don't believe, are there?
So instead, you, can you, yeah. They don't like that. They like you to use the pigs that.
John, there are no drains.
I think that's what you guys use now, right?
John, there aren't any drains in there.
That's what I just stated. But the parking lot itself, that's the concern, is especially that many cars. And it's what we've required for every other automotive facility in our town. And the other part of it is, which way does the water flow now? When I was there, it looked like it flows to the front into the swale there, and then it goes right into the brook. So, you know.
Left corner.
And onto the neighbor's, a butter's property and then to the brook. So that's, you know, a problem where everything that spills in there is going to drain.
Isn't the brook between, isn't it the brook between your property and the butter?
The brook runs through there, it would have to run through the property.
It runs right along here. And then. And then it goes under the road just west of there.
A lot of that time, that water that's kind of flowing is also from above us, too, like the Dunkins and everything else kind of coming through as well.
The difference is, is cars like that, in that condition, that's, typically they put swales in that you can, there are plants that actually eat oils and, and consume those. So a swale could easily be set up. You'd have to look into the exact plantings of it. But that's a very common thing because it consumes oils. Like for instance, in front of Tanger Outlets, there's that big pond, and it's full of catanine tails and other plants that actually consume all the oils from that parking lot before it discharges, so that, let's see.
I'm reading from the letter dated August 16th, 2023. It says, "I have not found any record of a state wetlands permit for this lot. However, I also don't see any proposed jurisdictional impacts on the plans you sent me that would have required one. Filling in a manmade stormwater detention pond in Uplands soils would not necessarily constitute a violation under Wetlands Bureau jurisdiction." And then they give the various RSAs. Unless there was evidence that it had been abandoned, not maintained long enough for the pond to become jurisdictional, EG develop hydro soils, hydro, something kind of vegetation, I don't know what to pronounce it. A certified wetland scientist would need to validate such a claim. And I think I had talked with you earlier about the possibility of you maybe wanting to get a wetland scientist to check it out. Because, as they say, this retention pond was originally put in because the original owner was going to pave the whole thing, and that was not done. I think that might be a good idea is to get a wetland scientist in to look at it. And, and then we could go from there. On, this letter goes on to say, "What is the location of the wetlands that are at risk of contamination due to the leaking fuel barrels?" Because at that time there were fuel barrels, those have since been removed. "I don't see any wetlands symbolized on the plan. Regardless, potential groundwater quality violations should be reported to NHDES, Waste Management Division, as soon as possible." See their webpage for any spills or. See their webpage for any spills reported." And there were no spills, because you did remove those immediately. "If I'm not understanding the town's concerns correctly, are there additional concerns regarding potential wetlands violation pursuant to RSA 482.a? Please let me know." And, and I guess that's what I don't see, where there are additional violations.
Well, DES, in that letter, and it kind of outlines it, what they do is if somebody has a violation, they send information to them, but they said there wasn't any reported violations.
Well, I think they, did they also, did they not come out and look at the property lien?
I, I can't say whether they physically came out or not. They sent that report based on our inquiry. Actually, it was based on the direction of this board to have the owner contact DES about how to proceed. I think was Mr. Scanlon's suggestion, that they called DES for direction. And they did, and that was the DES's response.
And I did again, two weeks ago. We also contacted them to kind of try to figure out what we should do next and those steps. And they had said that it doesn't apply to wetlands, shoreland, or subsurface, but possibly alteration of terrain. And then they kind of kept going back and forth and saying, "I didn't need a permit. There's no disturbance of any land. It's subject to local site plan permitting. You guys, requirements only. And then just go." And they just kind of kept saying that I did not need... I don't think they have a copy of this, no.
So DES doesn't require permits for this stuff that we're doing. They require permits for shoreline protection. They require permits if you're going to go and start doing things, dredge and fill in wetlands. And that's their primary thing. As for us, for site plans and for protecting them, which is for your benefit, that's our jurisdiction. So they don't have jurisdiction over this. They, they're not concerned unless you start touching wetlands or dredge and fill. So, and...
And they're not doing that. That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
Correct.
I do, I do think it's real important to do some planning there to keep soil erosion at a minimum. And I would suggest you get a wetland scientist in to delineate any wetlands that do exist, because that keeps coming up over and over when we're having our discussions. Anything else on the planning board?
I know there was some violations that were cited. Have those been corrected? The parking and all that, I know you had a laundry list before that they had to...
The parking of the, the vehicles, the number of vehicles, yeah, they've moved quite a bit. I didn't take an inventory today. I was down there before the last meeting. And many of those cars had been moved. They did not have, the, the, the RV was gone, the boats are gone.
Think on that violation that you sent, that mentioned about parking off on gravel and on...
Right, they, they are...
I, I went down there yesterday. There's, parking is all on the gravel. There's nothing on the, on the grass. And that's the must. You can't...
Right, there is parking on gravel, though, because it's not all paved.
Yeah.
And this proposal, I believe, is on park gravel as well. But the other stuff was all gone, though.
And there, and there...
The derby cars, all those.
The only, the only thing I saw, there was a tra, a trailer with a car on it that I assume was moving in. And Rusty's was taking a car out.
And now just reiterate, the concerns that I have and that you should be concerned with is that parking on gravel for an automotive thing, that cars will leak. And there's not much you can, it's very, very expensive to get rid of that. And that's why typically people will pave, and they go into a specialized drainage swale that, and I'm not an expert designing these, and I, but I've looked at many. And, and then a impervious surface will go into a drainage swale where it will go. And it will be treated by the plantings properly.
Any other comments?
So I think it is worth noting that on August 10th, the board approved the 39 vehicles only on the front side of the building. So that would mean...
That's why they're coming in with the amended plan tonight.
Right, right, but so currently there should be nothing, you know, behind the building.
Well, that's why they're coming in tonight with an amended, an amendment, okay? And that's what this is.
Well, if the amendment doesn't amend what the retention base, it still shows, it still shows that the flow, it still shows proposed paved areas and all that, so...
Shows what?
Well, all these conditions, that's what the site plan...
This is a 20...
And it shows the...
This is a, this is a, the 2004 plan.
Yes, and this here is the only amendment that's shown of that plan. So it should be amended if those things are not going to be in there, or they would have to be in there.
I don't understand. I mean, I, I am...
This is... I think the concern is that the amended, the amended site plan is not for the entire lot.
That is just me whiting out.
Okay.
So if you put this on top of that.
But this, this is still the 2004 engineered...
But that's the only valid plan.
Yes.
That's one that's being amended, amended. So this is actually the amended plan here.
Well, as long as you stick the one that you have on top of that one, if that makes sense. I just thought, because the only thing that we were really doing is the parking lot. I didn't think that you needed the rest of it, but it makes sense why you need it.
Yeah.
Because whatever is on the file, that's going to be the plan.
Yeah, I can copy that for you. And mush it together on the staples.
You know, and, and it includes all the notes and everything, so...
Right, right. So I can go back in and submit.
So...
Right.
Right, right, right. Before we, yep.
So I just want to clarify that based on earlier discussion, it's really 44 parking spaces now. Because we, well, they said 50 on here, but we just talked about how they have to eliminate six spaces because of 44. The six that you have to take away. The three here and then three there.
So I just add it up, right. This would be 12 over here, and then take these three away. So you've got 23 and 12 over here is 35. And then they've got 12 over here, right? That's 35. So you've got 23, 12. If you take the three away on the left, that's 12 and more. These three are gone. So that's three, four, five, that's seven, that's 47. And then you've got five employee. That's where we're at right now with taking the three and the three away. Also, I just would recommend to the board that they make clear that those parking spaces, I mean, I know you drew them on. I don't know how much space you measured out. But, you know, our regs, not only the pathway...
I was just about to get to that.
Oh, well, Eric, you go right ahead.
All right. Sorry. That's why I asked for the ruler. Because according to this plan, one inch equals 30 feet.
No, not the big one.
And this, this...
This, this, this plan here that was submitted.
The original, oh, the original, yep.
One inch equals 30 feet. And our ordinance, our regulation requires that a space be 19 feet wide.
Nine by 19.
Right, which is, I'm not really good at math.
What, do you want the square footage?
Nope, so it's 114 feet that we need, which is 3.8 inches on this map. And just on this map, which three point, and I'm going just for six spaces, because six spaces is 114 feet that you need. Which, according to this, brings you into the middle of your snow storage area.
Is it the other way? Like, the depth is 18 and the width is eight?
Sorry, I'm not a smart, yeah, that's all right.
So if you flip-flop, if you flip-flop that, then I think my measure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, hold on.
That's okay.
He's a teacher.
Yes. So we did do this, my students...
I wasn't the smartest kid in the class.
So my students and I did do this. We went out and we measured it all, and we made sure that it fit. And we did it based on a scale and all that stuff, so.
All right. Let me redo my math.
Yeah, so just, you know, you should make it, make sure, if you do do anything, just make it a condition that they, it meets the...
And I think one of the conditions, too, is that you have the fire department out to make sure that, that it's, they're all okay with what you have.
So, now, you said you were trying to get in touch with somebody to do up a plan and everything for you? How long, and I'm just throwing this out there. If we did a temporary with a real concrete date on it to allow parking, a reasonable parking or whatever considerations to protect everything, and set a date, that you could have a plan that doesn't have the notes on it and doesn't have all those other things that we would have to hold you to. You know, is that a possibility? You know, I know it's, we're approaching a year now. But it, it seems like you, you're having difficulty...
I think it was my understanding that you had planned to do that till you met with the selectmen, and you were told that that didn't need to be done. You were at that meeting, John.
That's what I was under the understanding, too.
I, I listened to that meeting.
What I can do is I can essentially take this copy, the little copy, and the big copy that you have, and white it all out and make it look pretty on the stuff that we are doing versus the stuff we're not doing. And then you guys can have a nice, kind of clean-cut one, rather than just this nice clean cut.
And then, then you saw the conservation notes.
Mm-hmm.
And see what you can...
I think you have a good seeding plan here. I'm the original. But nothing was ever done with that, apparently. Apparently, part of the work was done, and it was never finished. In 2004, '05, or whenever, there was no follow-up whatsoever. At some point in time, there was a whole forest there, and that got clear cut. I have, I can't find any record of that. I know you didn't do it, but... And that again changes the wetlands when you do clear cuts, so... That's why I suggested you might want to get a wetland scientist in to see exactly where the wetlands do exist now.
I remember when the town garage went in at the next lot that was all surveyed out there. It was very difficult to lay it out because all the wetlands that were around there. And there was another, something else that was turned down.
But I think from the maps I've looked at, the wetlands are not in that area. The wetlands are up towards the Camaro Heaven area, way in the back on that side, not down where the retention pond or anything else are. And remember, wetlands, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's some standing water. I made that mistake a long time ago.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the, the big question is, in 20 years since the last actual survey of the property and the clear cutting, are there wetlands?
Yeah.
Where are there wetlands? And as you stated, there's really no way to tell definitively outside of soil samples.
Or you could just stay 20 feet back away from the edge. Then you wouldn't. I think so.
I mean, I, I think the...
That is right there. If you look, that's a FEMA floodplain.
What, on, on this plan?
All through here and up along and through here.
The 2004 plan. The 2004 plan?
No, the, that FEMA is a 2024 plan. Just issue to 20...
This plan, though, is 20...
I think Mr. Scanlon's referring to the new 2024 FEMA maps that just came out recently, which I don't, I don't have in front of me right now.
I was going to say, that's not, we don't have that. You can probably pull it up.
Right. See if I could, Mike. My math skills aren't good. Maybe my internet skills are better.
We, we have a, a 20-foot step back from there, so...
What I'm saying is, from what I understand, it is a 20-foot step back already. If the wetlands are where I thought they were, and that's what we maybe, we need to determine, because it's like Eric said, and, and I said, and Nate said. It's been 20 years since we had that determined. So we don't really know right now where the wetlands are.
Yeah, and, and I don't know myself. The only thing I know is that, you know, what my commercial real estate broker had told me that sold us the property, is that it was on the back file, left-hand corner. That's, I mean, I can't tell where, I can't, you know, I'm not a, a wetlands person.
And we aren't either, so you know.
Nothing against real estate agents, but they are real estate agents.
No, 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 I understand, I understand.
And nothing against planning board people, but we are only planning board people. We don't have our civil engineering degree or our wetland scientist degree yet. We may have to end up getting it.
So if, if there were no parking on the west side behind the building, and it was just the 23 and 12 customer parking spaces on the east side, and then the five employee and so then there was just the travel lane without parking around the building, that would definitely prevent any vehicles from being within, you know, 20-plus feet of the, the brook as well as the, the back of the property. So wherever there could potentially be, be wetlands, because there's not going to be wetlands under the pavement.
When you're saying 23, when you're saying all these customer parking spaces, are these people who bring their cars and leave them and then come back and get them? I, I don't understand why you would need that many customer parking spaces.
Well, some might be. Some might be, like, they're there for the day. Some might be waiting for a part that could take a week or two to come in.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
It's still a lot of parking spaces, though.
I've seen cars that have been there for eight months.
I, I have in the past seen them that have been there since...
She's like a pit bull.
No, seriously, I've seen them too, because I'm addicted to Dunkin' Donuts, so... And I've seen one that I could even tell you not here, but privately, some of the license plates that I see day after day after day, and I don't see those cars moving.
I think that...
That's, that's my concern, are those things that are just there for whatever reason.
So I think originally, their plan, right, was automotive repair and possibly sales. And so that was the original thing, and then kind of this whole thing had started. So I think they had bought maybe some of those cars, and maybe they're just kind of stuck there because they're kind of waiting to see if we can, you know, what our next steps are in that respect. If that is, right, the way that we're going is just automotive repair, those cars, if they are there supposedly, you know, for sales down the line, would have to be moved.
Well, the original plan was for sales and service.
Right.
That, that, back 100 years ago, I'm exaggerating, but back in 2004. Okay, that was the original plan.
We would love to keep it that way.
And he was going to repair.
Right.
So it makes sense that when the property was bought, that you would have thought that would be taking place, but that...
Correct.
And, and you know, I think you were involved in it enough to know that in the beginning, it was just a conglomeration of things, so that we didn't really know what was taking place. And that's what we're trying to, to establish now. And, and that's why I'm questioning why you would need that many parking spaces for customers.
Well, there's, so there's seven... Well, there's, so there's seven bays, right? So seven mechanics.
Seven bay, seven mechanics?
Seven bays, seven mechanics.
Mechanics, but you know, seven bays, you're using different bays for different jobs, you know, while you're waiting on pots for another one there.
Okay.
So I think that's an additional.
It's definitely not a plan to make it look like what it did look like. It was absolutely atrocious and I think.
Yes, it was.
A lot further along than we were at the beginning. I mean, that's the intent.
I, I agree.
To make it look nice. I mean, we don't want y- your phone ringing off the hook saying, you know, the place in this town looks horrible. You know what I mean? That's not what we're looking for. That's why we're spending a lot of time coming here to try to find out exactly what we can do and how to make sure everything's going to be right with you, you know.
I think we do need to determine where the wetlands are, are, if there are wetlands on your property.
Perfect.
Is everybody agreeable to that? Eric? Do you think we need to know where the wetlands are?
Yeah, but I don't, can we?
Better, better just stay back from it.
You know.
But if we don't know where they are, how can we tell them to stay back from it? I think, and that's, that's an issue. I think that we don't know where they are right now. We know where they, we don't even know for sure where they were in two thousand and four. We have hearsay of where they were, but it's not really delineated.
Our way to do a conditional.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get at, is to get, do something so they can continue to do their business. Number one, we need the fire department to go out and give an okay on the, on the, uh, space. I think we need to determine where the wetlands are.
Well, which space are you talking about? On this plan here?
On the, on the current plan.
This plan?
This, this, this plan, this.
Oh, the amended.
Yeah, the amended plans.
Yep.
Eric pointed out that there's not enough space per the rules and regulations of the ordinance for to be two-way traffic or for, even for a fire truck to get around if it was necessary. And that has to be, we have to have that, for sure.
And they did say they would come out. I called them last week, but since he was down and out, I was kind of running all over the place, so.
The only thing is, if we're going to get them to approve something, we should have a final plan that they're approving it to, as opposed to not, because we don't have a final accurate plan yet. There's no, this is, doesn't show the final.
Well, I guess we're back where we started from then.
If you have the fire department come out for something that's not going to be there.
We told them, initially, we told them to provide us with a site plan. And they were going to do that, and then all of a sudden, other people got involved in it. And the last time they came into the selectmen, they were told that they didn't need a site plan. So we're going around and around. Well, I watched it. I, I watched it.
It's like.
You have an approved site plan for this property from two thousand and four.
Correct.
Approved by the planning board.
Correct.
A little while ago, I heard you tell the applicant to renew notes and whatnot from that approved site plan. Isn't that the responsibility?
I didn't tell them to re, what do you mean, remove notes? I didn't receive remove notes from a site plan. Remove notes from a site plan? And, and.
You have this approved site plan. What they need to do is amend the approved site plan. It doesn't disappear.
Well, I thought that's what we were doing tonight. Was amending the site plan.
It sounds like they're just trying to amend the parking portion of that site plan.
Wasn't that what you were told to do when you came, went in to see the selectmen?
Correct, and that's when I thought I didn't need to do anything to this, the other half of it, because that detention pond didn't exist. So I was like, oh, I'm just going to amend the parking.
But you would have to deal with the rest of it. Because of this site plan, it doesn't disappear.
And by amend, do you mean, I can't just white it out? I need to write like does not exist? Or how, how would we go about that?
Well, we, we wanted you to come in with an, a site plan based on the job, the business that you were running.
Okay.
Okay, that's what the original request was. Then other things got involved in it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If you want to amend this site plan, and I, I don't know where I was supposed to say you could have erased, I never said that and I would never say that. I would never say that and we'll review the tape to make sure that goes on the record and I wanted on the rec, on the notes that I did not say that. I think what we talked about, what you talked about, what you said, well, I can white it out.
Yeah, that would be on me.
Okay, that was you, not me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I guess what we need to know is what direction do we want them to do a brand-new site plan? Do we want them to amend the twenty oh four plan? I mean, we can't keep playing games that's trying to run a business.
That matches what they intend to do and what, what's, what's going to be there. That has to match.
Which would be the little copy that I gave you attached with the big copy. You know what I mean? Like, if I were to actually go out and do it.
You have notes, you have notes on here.
Right.
And all those things. It has to match. Everything has to match. So if it says you're going to have asphalt, parking detail with asphalt.
Right, get rid of it.
And thickness and crushed gravel, that's, whatever that says has to match what you're doing.
Unless, unless there are change, you make changes to that plan, you get to get permission from us to do that, okay?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, so, so I, I think some of the concern comes from, from the language, uh, just because we, we need a, an amended site plan, a, a, a new site plan and I think just copying the two thousand and four site plan and then making, making changes, it, 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 it doesn't seem to be, uh, sufficient just due to the fact that you're not confirming that everything on the site plan is in place or updating it. So I, I think.
So write an amendment, is what you're saying, and so what I just like.
An amended site plan would, would be a new site plan.
Yep.
Showing what you want it to look like, uh.
Yeah, I can do that. And then answering the stuff that was on two thousand and four that we did not do.
Or that somebody did not do.
Right, and just stating that in that amendment, so like a.
And I see that as part of the plan. It's not part of the problem, is that that two thousand and four site plan was great when it was approved, but it was never completed and nobody ever followed up on it.
Correct.
Eric?
I have another question about where, if we're asking for what, wetland delineation, big word for me tonight. In three point six of our regulations, wetland delineations older than five years old will not be considered valid for the purpose of site plan. But then the other side of that is, no wetland surveys can be conducted between December first and March thirty-first. So,
We have to do it.
So that's, that's your other challenge is, you kind of got to wait until mosquito season.
Right.
Send the poor wetland scientists into the woods and see. I mean, I don't think a spring has developed in the middle of that property or anything like that. I think personally, I think it's mainly going to be in the back.
Mm-hmm.
That's just my own, just looking at maps that I'm looking at online.
Yeah, and that's what, that's why I said in the very beginning that.
But I, I think, I mean, I don't know if we could do some type of conditional thing where. Yeah, where these things have to be, because you, they're not going to be able to get that until April. It may be May before.
And if we find it necessary to pave, you're not going to be able to do that now.
Right.
Well, if, and if they do need to, like, pave or paint since it is Route eleven, they would then have to deal with the state as far as what they need to do in order to pave and, and, and paint the existing surface.
Lot, plant are closed down now, so they couldn't do any of that.
State doesn't have to deal with the, the parking lot there.
Doesn't the DOT have to approve driveways and parking lots on state roads?
It's the curb cut, which is existing.
Okay.
They don't, they don't care.
They're not changing that. They're not doing any changing there at all.
Can I ask a question? So, one of my tenants just brought up a question to me and he got an occupancy permit last year.
Mm-hmm.
And how does that pertain to him? As, you know what I mean? Like, he got everything. He came down, he did all his paperwork and he, everything was approved and everything and he's still there. So he was just asking me, so I'm just relaying the message because he's not at the mic.
Well, we're not going to shut him down. That's, that's not the purpose. The purpose of this is to get, to get something that is agreeable to both you and to the town. And we need to protect the town in whatever way we can.
Okay.
So that's why we're asking some of the questions we are.
All right. Yeah, he just.
And I, I would, could I add something? Uh, so, eh, the certificate of occupancy is, you know, for the building. That is, you know, a, a code inspection and, uh, fire, life safety in, inspection. So that doesn't necessarily pertain to, like, the parking lot, the parking spaces, the, the external area.
According to our code, you have to have a site plan before you get an occupancy permit. So that's the issue that he's talking about. The, the thing is, is that, yeah, there was a site plan, but doesn't meet what's there. And that's what the issue, issue is, so we're, I, I think we're trying to get something.
Absolutely, okay.
Or have you provide something that matches what you're going to be doing and what is actually there? So when you look at this, when it's all said and done, it matches what's there.
Right.
And it meets all of our building codes in the site. One of the issues is, is that, all the cars there, they're in violation. If you've read our junkyard provisions, or if you've read them, and they've been cited for a couple times, any business, any place of storage or deposit, whether in connection with another business or not, which has stored or deposited two or more unregistered vehi, motor vehicles, which are no longer intended uh, or in condition for legal use on public highways or use parts of motor vehicles, old iron metal, and, and it goes on, and that's, that's big. And presently, and it's, it was cited on the previous, uh, I think back in June of last year, I think it was, our, um, Landry's coordinator went out and cited that for those things. I don't know the exact date.
And that doesn't exist now.
Oh, they're still, are, are there unregistered vehicles?
Well, there can be.
There's some because they're being towed in from other, like, businesses essentially, and they come in and so they're dealer-owned. So they would be considered unregistered, I guess?
Yeah, like if Tilton Ford bought a vehicle.
I was just, exactly where I was going to use that, a car dealership as an example. You have unregistered cars there. I don't think that the cars that, there, at one point, there were junk cars there.
Correct.
That's why you came to our attention to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
You would never have come to our attention if one owner had left and a new owner took over. But what happened was, one owner left, a new owner took over and the lot suddenly became a real junkyard, and that's exactly what it was in the beginning.
Yes, it was.
That's what brought, brought it to our attention and that's why we've been so long trying to resolve things.
Right.
We can appreciate that, because I mean, it looks a lot better now than it did.
Not perfect. We're working on it.
So what we need is an amended site plan.
Okay.
Based on the things we've brought up tonight. Are there any other things we want to bring up?
So I guess a, a, as a board, per the concerns of some of the members, as well as the recommendation from the Conservation Commission, do we want to require an environmental impact study and a wetland scientist to determine where wetlands are and, and buffers are?
I think for everybody's benefit, we need a wetland scientist. I don't think we need an environmental, an environmental impact study. I don't even, I've never even had heard of us doing that. Yes, Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, since we seem like we solved everything, um, are we able to?
I'm sorry, Eric.
And identify yourself, Eric. A lot of the people don't know who you are.
Hi, I'm Eric Flynn at, uh, five forty-nine West Main Street Rent-a-Tech. I was just wondering if, um, I can put in my, uh, paperwork to petition for inspection machines since we dealing with, I guess, outside, uh, things like the conservation and whatnot. But we can, uh, you gave us permission to run an automotive repair facility, but it's really hard to run it without a state inspection license. And I can't get a state inspection license at this point because one of the questions it asks is, is there any violations on its premises? So I'm stopped at that point. So I wanted to ask the board, um, am I clear to a, at least proceed in the automotive repair facility side, including inspection machine? Or putting in my paperwork for it? I mean, it's not up to you guys if I get it, but it do go past you guys if, uh, you know, when I petition for it.
Well, right now, there is no site plan, so I guess there are violations. You can put in your paperwork, but.
And.
Until we give you the go-ahead, I mean, we're just not giving you a cease and desist right now.
But there's not a.
But we, but we need a valid site plan in order for your location to be in compliance with the town's regulations.
And I heard twice, one that it wasn't and one that it was a valid site plan. So I'm, I'm hearing both. So there's not a valid site plan.
The two thousand and four plan was valid.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Things have changed and now we need an amended site plan to make it valid today.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
And with that amended site plan, does it need to be done by a professional? Or is it something that we can continue to mock up?
That's up to you.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay.
I think the application states what has to be on there. Specifically, I think it says, you know, an arrow and property lines and all that.
Help.
Mm-hmm.
I, it's.
The end's been a great help trying to, you know, help Steph try to, to do this and, um, if that's acceptable. Stephanie's, you know, she's willing to put the time and then try to get the, you know, because waiting for somebody else again.
I know you have.
At the mercy of. And, and I do feel bad for Eric because, you know, just doing state inspections for, just for his stickers, it's not like it, it's a big impact on his repair business and I, and I understand that, you know what I mean? And I kind of, we're trying to do everything we can for him, just so he can do his state inspections, you know?
And on the site plan, you said to make sure that we put everything that we intend to do. So if it was approved in two thousand and four for repair and sales, can we put that on this one as well? To keep it uniform in that respect?
That's the site plan that exists now.
Okay.
That you're operating under. It says, I believe, doesn't it say sales and repair? I think it does.
But I believe the sales involve that extension of the gravel, which was of the paving, which wasn't done in the detention pond and all that. And so that is what triggered the research in the department, which said this site does not conform to that. And if they're going to do sales, that was brought to the planning board saying, you know, to look at that plan. And a change of use for sales because the site plan, again, did not conform to what they had been agreed to in two thousand and four. And that's how this whole thing started. So I personally wouldn't think that by saying sales now, that's a whole new, because you don't have an approved, you have an approved site, unless they want to do the original site plan, which is how I would view it, but it's up to the board.
Okay.
As a wood people member, I.
The, I think the regulations say what you have to do.
Yeah.
You, you know, you should really read the regulations. Everything is really detailed in there. Because if people are telling you verbally, it's up to interpretation of what you heard. Because if people are telling you verbally, it's up to interpretation of what you heard. You really want to make sure you you do it right, because that's interpretations have been done, and we we it's almost a year, or it is a year now, and we don't have a site plan for there.
I think originally, we were waiting because we were told kind of like a professional needed to do it, and then we were told, oh, we could do it, and then it was kind of a back and forth thing, so now at least
When you came in the first time, you we we told you we wanted a site plan, and that involved usually a professional.
Right.
That goes back a year when we were meeting at the police department, and was the first time we met Eric and a whole slew of other people. Unfortunately, at that time, you weren't involved in it. And because you weren't involved, that threw us back further, and, you know, it was just one one mishap after the other.
Bottom line is, you just have to have a proper site plan that matches in the regulations and 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 that. Fifth point on file.
Definitely.
So I mean, if you want to do it, and you can do that, that's your prerogative. It doesn't
I will try.
Yeah.
Yes, so the the town does have a site plan review regulations, as well as the site plan application form on the the website. You you could, you can do a site plan by yourself. You can use the existing site plan as a guide for the type of information that you need to in include, and and you know, you could use this in order to draw a new site plan and replicate the, you know, current conditions, you know, if you chose not to, you know, have a engineering firm do it for you.
Okay.
Any other comments on planning board? We want to put this to bed, too.
We'll get there. We will get there.
I hope I hope it won't be another year. Okay.
So if we need a wetland scientist in the fire department and kind of all this stuff to happen, what would be our timeline?
If you if you look at what a site plan needs, that will can guide you. And again, he said Leanne's been helpful. I'm sure Leanne will continue to be helpful.
Once once you have that site plan drawn up, when you bring it into the land use office, we can send it off to fire for their comments on the site plan for, so we can take care of that for you. You don't need to deal with that. And the wetlands, you won't be able to mark the wetlands
Right.
on your drawing, because you're not a wetland scientist. I believe it probably would be agreeable to this board if you just had the wetlands delineated, and that means a wetland scientist goes out and marks the area on the site, and they usually tag it so you can clearly see the orange flags of where the wetland is. But I, you cannot add the wetlands on your plan, because you're not a wetland scientist, but you can have them delineated by a scientist.
Into a site lock.
And and any, before we go, any comments from the public?
So
You have a question?
Yeah, so that wetland scientist can't come out until after March thirty-first? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so I just wanted to state that, you know, the wetland scientists, they may offer additional services such as plotting or or mapping the the wetlands on your property that they that they find.
Any other comments on planning board? Any other comments from the public? Okay. Leanne, you're going to set them up when they're ready to come back to see you? Motion?
Yeah.
Going to make the motion?
Motion.
Eric. Well, it's hard to pick a date when we don't know when they're gonna I would say
Well, can
Two weeks give you time to
I'll have it done by this Friday. I'll call all these people and do everything that I need to do. I'm off this week.
I don't want you to come back.
I'm not coming back this week, but I will make sure that it's in.
They won't have their wetlands.
I won't have the wetlands, but I'll make
That could also be a condition that it's
Yeah, the wetlands will be a condition if we can't get it till then, okay?
And then the fire department can't come in until, obviously, the site plan then gets approved from you guys, so it's, yeah.
So for the board, your next meeting isn't until March, I believe it's the twenty-sixth. You have no meeting in March twelfth, because that's election day.
Election day.
So your next meeting, if you want to continue this, would be the twenty, I think, I don't have my calendar, the twenty-sixth is a Tuesday, I think. Well, the twelfth, yeah, twelfth and fourteen days is twenty-sixth.
Make a motion that we continue Planning Board case twenty-four dash oh one until
March
March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
opposed. Okay, we'll see you the twenty-sixth.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I know it's not on the agenda, but at the last planning board meeting, they took some action on Eleven Maple Court, and that property owner came to the office today wanting to get more information and correct any problems they're having. So I suggested he come here and ask to be added to the agenda and and address the board.
I think one of the things that I, we had a meeting, the last meeting we had, we said we would have issue or a cease and desist, and I guess the first thing we need in
Oh, the mic can't, oh, sorry.
Can you hear me? I guess we'll we'll be happy to listen to you, but what we need from you before we can take any action at all is we need you to fill out an application, and we'll go from there. But if you would like to address us first, that's fine. Identify your your name. I don't know.
My name is Raymond McMahon from MDI Rehab and Development. I'm the owner of Eleven Maple Court. We've got a driveway that was installed back late fall with a permit inspected. Everything was fine. It's an in-kind driveway. The driveway was there. It was an abandoned house that had a driveway. We redid the driveway where it was, same dimensions, same length, same. And it's on a hill. The house is on a hill. And my neighbor's house is in the bottom of the hill. My neighbor's house, unfortunately, gets a lot of water from the hill. And from the day we started on that project, I was asked to redo the sewer, because the the sewer wasn't draining right in her house, and it supposedly was the fault of my house. I got a letter from her attorney to do it. Then I find out that the, a selectman or affiliated with the selectman's office works, lives there. Also, a planning board member lives there. I feel like I'm being, it's almost abuse of power, I feel. Because everything was done. It was inspected. Everything was done according to what the town wanted. We didn't add anything. I've got pictures here to show it. I think most of you have seen it. It was an abandoned house for years that was restored, and I think we did a good job for the neighborhood to bring it back. We've done, everything's gone through the building department. But every time we move in that house, we get problems from the neighbor. And I would just like an explanation to know why. Why are we getting these problems from the neighbor? There's nothing we've done. She's even asked me to cut trees down that were affecting her property, that were that were on her property, and I had my people do it when they were working there. We've gone out of our way, but now we're showing, the house is completed. We're showing the house. We're having issues with the house where people are going to look at the house. They're being told that the house has sewer problems, the house has issues, and we haven't done anything about it yet, but it's at the point where I feel that the town needs to know about it. That the things that have gone on, I mean, they want the house torn down. I understand. They don't want neighbors. But the house got restored. It's going to get sold. It's been, you know, everything, and now I get a cease and desist order saying three months after the driveway was put in, I get a cease and desist that I have to, I can't get an occupancy permit until I reapply for a permit I've already gotten. Why wasn't this ever brought up before? You know, this is, it was put in in the late fall. We got a stop work order the day we put it in, because there was a little bit of dirt in the street, on a dead end street while they were doing it from my neighbor again. You know, we've done other projects in the town. We've had the towns, we've worked great with the town. We've done, you know, we're happy working on the town, but ever since this particular house that happens to be next door to someone on the planning board and someone in the selectman's office, I seem like there's no, we can't do anything right. Now, we'd just like to have an explanation why. If there's something we're doing wrong, we'll correct it, but I need to know what we're doing wrong.
When it was brought to my attention, it was that you, your permit was to to repave a drive.
That's what we did.
And you just started your thing by saying you installed a driveway in late fall, and and that was what, when we had our meeting the other day, that's what came out of it, were these these pictures of what it looked like before and what it looks like now, and it's extended beyond where it was, which is not just a repave.
It's a repave. It's exactly in the same place it was.
Planning board members, you guys were here, you want to comment? You weren't.
I was not here.
So in the photo where it is a dirt and gravel driveway.
That's after the hot top was, they, those pictures were taken when the hot top was removed, and they had put the underlayment to put the hot top driveway in.
Reconstruct.
Right, because the old one was all all broken.
Right, that was when they they removed, they had removed the
Right, that's when the hot top was removed.
Before it was removed?
That's after it was removed.
This is after it was removed.
So this is, oh, sorry.
That's when they have the gravel down before they put the hot top on.
So the, it wasn't repaved, it was reconstructed. You took all the
We took the old hot top off because it was broken. It was all damaged. And we took it off and we replaced it. It was, we applied for a twelve by a twelve by sixty-seven or sixty-eight driveway, and that's what was installed. That's what was approved. That's what was inspected.
This is the old one, correct?
Uh, that's after some work had been done.
Because it it does look like there is paved material in a Y going both up towards, I guess, the entryway and then
There was, the original driveway had the part that we paved, and there was also a turnaround in front of the house. And that was taken out.
So so I guess the concern then is that by not repaving that turnaround space, you were changing the design of the driveway because there was asphalt there, which is a, you know, non-permeable substance, and now there's not asphalt there, which, you know, may change groundwater runoff and and erosion from the property.
We all know that if that section was hot topped, would create more water going down. She lives, the other house is lower than the street level. The water comes down the hill, hits the street. The minute it hits the street, goes into that, there's no way else for the road, the water to go. Water will not flow uphill.
Just, you know, point of order, I, if you're going to go and do that, I think all, it should be publicly noticed, so everybody can comment on it. And that hasn't been for this meeting. If you look at the directions on your application, it says, fill out the application form, stick out or paint the limits of the proposed driveway on your property. Attach a sketch or a plan showing and submitting the entire form. If you just read through those, you, we don't have any of that.
I understand, but a driveway in kind, there's no need to
Well, you you can't go and decide what you want to do. This is the directions. This is what you have to follow. We can't say that's not applicable or anything like that.
But the permit was filled in. The dimensions were put in, and the the permit was given. We 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 did receive, we did receive the permit.
There's nothing, there's no, nothing. This is for the planning board. This is what we're supposed to have. This will require everybody to do. Everybody, and it includes drainage, and that the drain should be directed towards a swell from the town road.
It was inspected.
Okay.
It was approved.
This, this, it's not a valid permit here. It's it's not complete. I think we need to, you know, schedule it, fill it out to the right thing, and just reprocess it through the thing and get it done right.
So if I fill out a new application with a drawing, that's all I need to do.
Follow the directions there on that. Turn it in. It will, somebody will come and inspect it. You come in and talk to the planning board about what your plan is. None of that was done.
So I have to come before the planning board to put in an in-kind driveway?
It says right on here, exactly what you have to do.
I understand, but we came to the town asking what needed to get done, and we filled out the application. We got the permit, and we did the driveway. That's what, it's been there for three months.
So just the requirement for a repave right now before the planning board is that it go to DPW?
No.
Yes, it is. I have the minutes where the planning board
That is what it is, John.
Thank you, Jane. It's in the minutes that the planning board said repaves do not, and I, in the minutes, it says, Land Use Coordinator clarified that no repaves will be going to the planning board. Is that correct? It's right in the minutes. I can get you a copy. And the board said, yes, repaves do not go to the planning board. They get approved by DPW. Just so you, just so we all have the same facts.
January tenth.
No, that was before January tenth. January tenth was a discussion about driveways.
Point of order.
Prior to that, I I can get you a copy of the minutes.
And I I've seen the notes, and she's absolutely right, John. My concern is that, as far as I'm concerned, it is not, it was not just a repave. You reconstructed the drive. You went beyond the bay window. You went way up. You didn't pave on the side. You completely changed the driveway. That is not a repaving.
We didn't change the driveway. The driveway is in the same spot it was in. The only thing we didn't do is we didn't do the L that was there.
Here's a motion.
Because that L was sloping right in that house, and that slope would have been draining all the water coming down off the hill would have hit that drive that side. I'll put in that that L if you want it, but it's going to flood that house. It's the, you can't slope it up the hill. It has to slope down the hill. And that hill goes all the way up Winter Street. That hill starts way up on top of Winter Street, and it comes down. There's a lot of water on that hill. I see the water coming down. And the the street, once it hits the street, it drains automatically. It drains in that driveway of that house next door. I can't control it. My driveway ends at the street.
At the end of the street where I think the water is supposed to go.
But my driveway slopes away from that. But once it hits the street, the street goes the other way. The street goes into your driveway.
It's not my driveway, by the way.
Well.
Sorry, I I think Sorry, I think the confusion or the point of contention is whether that, that L is the driveway or is not the driveway.
That L had been added on by someone to park an extra car or whatever. The original driveway was the driveway that was straight from the street going up to the house.
So...
Well, all I'd like to do is for you to fill out the form complete.
Okay.
Read the directions on that. Turn them in and then we will get an approval, okay? You come back to the planning board and we'll discuss it, okay?
But if I don't need, if I don't need this for an in-kind driveway, why am I coming back?
But that's not what we're seeing from the pictures.
I got a cease and desist.
We're not seeing an in-kind driveway.
Out of the clear, out of the clear blue sky. I got a cease and desist.
I know you did.
Out of the clear blue sky, three months after the driveway is in, it doesn't make sense.
Well, make an, come in, fill out the form, and we'll make an appointment and you can come in before the planning board, okay? Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
I have a question.
When he comes? What's your question?
No, I'll save it. The town, the town property tax card shows a car parked in front of that house on a driveway. The property tax card, this is the avatar chart. It shows the driveway, shows that L. This is what you're talking about for the turnaround.
The house was vacant. The guy's been dead over here.
Well, it was there. It was paved.
He has a picture of Avatar on the tax card with the drive, a car parked, and Billy's truck parked there too. But I just said to Eric, the house was vacant for over a year. Billy's been dead over a year. So it deteriorated during that time. And when he comes, well, right now, we're just gonna, he's gonna fill out the form, come back, and we can discuss it then. Okay? And we...
And also the town of Tilton as an... Close in to the town of Tilton's property.
I understand that. I, he came in tonight and he wanted to address the board. And he did. We gave him direction on his next step, okay? Tonight was not the night to discuss the situation. That was not the plan.
So the soonest he would be in would be the 26th, so it'd be a month before there's the next meeting schedule.
Okay, our next on the agenda is what, the minutes?
Yeah.
I don't, I have, I have so much paper here.
I have the agenda out. Yeah, 13th and 21st.
Okay, February 13th and February 21st. Has everybody had a chance to review these?
Yeah.
The 13th, you should have had the, if you want to table the 21st, I just got those from the minute taker. So I thought I'd put them, give them to you if you want to read them and approve them or if you want to table them, that's fine.
I will just take, has everybody had a chance to read February 13th?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, are there any discussion on them? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the 13th. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is February 21st. And I think we should take a few minutes to read these because they involve what we're going to be hearing at the next...
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written of February 21st.
Hold on, I'm not done reading.
Okay.
Sorry.
Always a slow boy. He's digesting it.
Hooked on phonics worked for me. Making fun of myself. Maybe it's just English. On your, and I don't know if they can be changed, but on the list of here, number four, I just, report to the building inspector, no occupancy certificate to be issued until the resolution is done. It just sounds vague.
Until the issue is resolved.
Yeah, it was just like issued is resolved or the... Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Yeah.
It could be any resolution. I just, I don't know, I, again, I'm not a, I've already said I can't add a multiple, right, so... I guess my only other, again, this is all after the thought, so I don't know what we can do. But immediate steps need to be taken, whether it's sandbags or whatnot, to prevent the runoff going into the butters. But wouldn't it be...
That's, that's where the minutes of what the motion was.
I know, but...
We can't change that.
Well, that's why, all right, I didn't want, I didn't know if it was, and again, this is after the thought, but wouldn't it be the responsibility of the property owner to do the sandbags? Or is it the town's responsibility to put sandbags in? And that's just leaving it, all right. Because up here, up, all right, never mind. On the top of that, back of that page, it says, to see if they can notify them to put some sandbags. I guess, I didn't know who them was. Is that the highway, again, the highway department or is that the property owner?
The them is the owner of 11 Maple Court.
Yeah. I was just clarifying. Because all I'm, I have not watched the video, so I'm just going by that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Was that second?
No, because I was reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Were there any?
As amended. Yes, he changed the awkward wording. He changed.
I wasn't here, so I can't.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It'll be it.
You guys have it.
See you in March.